Good for the viewers. It's good for the viewers. Good evening, welcome to the Town of Cicero Planning Board Meeting. Would you please join us in the pledge? Chuck, would you lead us off, please?
Sure.
Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the April sixteenth meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
My vote yes, minutes have been approved. Now we will open the meeting to public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to address the board on any active application, you may do so now. Good evening.
Thanks, so. Great. My name is Jay. Can you? Is it going through? Okay, okay. My name is Jay Reardon. I live on Pony Lane. I used to live at Guild American Home site on Route eleven there. And in my property, there was a bought, or my house there was bought for BioCita for the Micron project. So I wanted to just give a couple of comments about item number three, which are those hundred twenty unit apartments that are Americana, I believe they're called, that are planned for thirty-one in that area up there, which is close to the that busy intersection of eleven and thirty-one, but also has the Micron project right down the road. And the Micron project is in Clay, but as my previous home sale demonstrates, it's happening here in Cicero too. I think that generally the project seems okay. I think that a big sales pitch for people to live there, once it's built, would be the easy, non-car oriented accessibility. When the weather is good, you could, the residents could walk or bike, frankly, to the Micron campus, which is pretty cool. So it was a little bit disappointing to see that there doesn't seem to be a demarcated bike lane coming out. There might not be space for it, but I urge you to keep stuff like that in mind. And I also have a bigger point, though, or bigger concern. And that's that it's really hard for a member of the public like myself to come to an opinion or understanding about larger projects like this. And it's just this one. I mean, the other six items on your agenda don't have this significant issue. But it's hard for us in the public to come to an understanding of projects like this and create an opinion about them without seeing or reading this Micron draft environmental impact statement. From what I understand, the environmental impact statement is going to be about a thousand pages, maybe more, with a lot of useful information about the impact of the project on this community and surrounding communities. It's, it's, this environmental impact statement has been a long time coming. It started in late twenty twenty-three. There were all these hearings down there at the junior high school on Taft Road. And a lot of nice public involvement in the scoping resolution, which was finalized, as I understand it, in December of twenty twenty-three, so about about seventeen or so months ago. One of the interesting things was that in that scoping resolution for Micron's environmental impact statement, this board, Town of Cicero Planning Board, was identified as an involved party, involved agency, actually, which, as I understand, makes this board more involved in the project and in the environmental review than even organizations like the Town Board in Cicero or the Town Board in Clay, which are just interested agencies, which are basically equivalent to any other member of the public. The draft environmental impact report was originally supposed to be completed sooner. It's a huge project, though, and it's the biggest commercial project that New York State has ever seen. So it's understandable that there were some delays in completing it. And that pushed its completion to this state here. Now, as I understand it, though, the status of the draft environmental impact statement is that one or two months ago, a preliminary version, a preliminary draft environmental impact statement was completed by the county and all the other agencies involved. And it was at this time that our county executive there, Ryan McMahon, gave his state of the county address and said that he had received this final draft of a draft. So there's a lot of adjectives at play here. And that it's also my understanding that this preliminary DEIS was sent to every involved agency that is per the scoping resolution back in twenty twenty-three, and that this board is one of those involved agencies. So I have a few questions so that the public can, can better evaluate and give comments on projects like the Americana that is proposed, that are close to Micron and significant, significantly involved with Micron. One of the questions is, do you guys have the preliminary draft?
Just to make it clear, this is an opportunity for you to express concern, questions, or comments. There's not a dialogue.
I'll rephrase that, then. I think it is an issue within the community that this has not been publicly released yet. But here's the thing, it is coming. As far as we understand, as far as the public understands, and I don't mean to speak for anybody else, but if you, if you look at the Syracuse newspaper, they recently did a letter from the editors where they wanted this information released so that they can publicize it, which makes sense. And there's also a group of organizations, about fourteen organizations, that are involved in this sustained CNY coalition that would also like to review this information. So there is a concern here that this draft environmental impact statement will maybe not have an appropriate public input period. From what I, from what we understand, the public input will be limited to a forty-five day comment period and a, and there will not be any public hearings scheduled. However, I would recommend, especially when we're considering projects like this, when you're considering projects like this, that are significantly involved, maybe by happenstance, with Micron, that maybe there can be some accommodation for this, from this board, which is an involved agency, in making the public input happen in a better way. One suggestion that was raised by the sustained CNY coalition was that this board, or perhaps the Town Board, could do a workshop, maybe invite Micron, and go through and sort of prompt public input and public involvement. Again, this is going on a very big tangent with regards to the DEIS, but I think we, and especially with regards to this one particular project, but it's, it's a huge document. It's going to have a ton of information on there about everything that's going on and the implications of it. And whatever this board can do to help the public understand this complex one thousand page or more document and, and what it means for us, would I think be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on any active application? Given nobody else's approach, we'll close the public input and move on to the first agenda item. This is for a public hearing for the property at five, six, nine, one, Mumbell Road. This is a subdivision for two lots. Is the applicant here? Welcome back. Good, thank you. Want to just kind of quick, give a quick overview of what's going on, what you're looking to do?
Yeah, we're trying to subdivide a property. There's a storage building on the lot and then a small ranch house. We're trying to subdivide aside the neighbor's property that's kind of in between our property. Both the pieces of land and we plan to sell the house parcel and keep the storage facility.
We just received a new survey. Were there any modifications on that? I haven't had a chance to review them.
Yeah, I'll go ahead if you want. Yeah, the, the plan that was recently submitted addressed two or three minor comments that were needed to clean up the plan and address comments that we've been working with the applicant to get addressed. So it, it, in my opinion, this is ready for your approval with everything.
Happy with those modifications?
Yes.
Okay. Right, great, thank you. We'll open up the public input. You can go ahead and sit down. Is there anybody that would like to speak at the public hearing on this issue? Given nobody's approach, we'll close the public hearing. And do we want seeker? I'll make a motion for a standard seeker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes for the seeker. Neil, would you propose a motion for approval, please? And would somebody like to make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. You're all set? Thank you. Have a good night. We'll move on to the second agenda item. This is a site plan review for the property at six, zero, five, four, East Taft Road, a proposed construction yard.
Good evening, Tim Coy, I'm in Romans. Just handing out some of your match of what you already have. This is a van settled existing site over there on Taft Road. It's been almost a year since we've been on this board. The previous site plan originally there planted.
So, again, Tim Coy, I'm News in Romans. This is an existing site plan that's been kind of going on for a while now. Last time you saw this specifically, they were trying to put a proposed building way in the back here next to their service yard. They have since decided they don't want to do the building for a bunch of reasons, financial reasons being number one. So they do not have an existing site plan in place as they've been operating for the last ten years without a site plan. So specifically, we're trying to clean that up, get their site plan in place so that they can continue operating with what they're doing out there. So that's their plan. They're going to continue doing what they've been doing for the last ten or so years. However, with some modifications, we're still showing the pavement up front being created. They still have to widen some of the gravel driveway, the existing gravel driveway in there to make it meet code. Those are the basic changes to the site plan or to the site that they're going to propose at this time. I do know that I forgot to add a note about the grading and the drainage patterns not changing. I have to add that per Mark's comments. I believe we've addressed everything else, but it's pretty straightforward. Again, they've been operating out there with this use for about ten years. We need to get their site plan in place so they're code compliant.
We'll open up to questions, Jim?
So they operate out of here now?
Yes.
They don't have any building or anything?
They have the existing resident or structure out front. That's where their office is.
Okay. So this is basically just to give approval or?
They should have come in ten years ago for this exact site plan. They've been operating without one for this long. So even though they don't want to do the building in the back, they still have to get a, a compliant site plan in place with the town to be code compliant with what they're doing.
Okay.
Hope I explained that.
You did. I'm good.
Thank you. Chuck? Just a comment. There's no issue with wetlands in this area?
No.
No, I'm all set. Thank you. Mary?
So can we see the aerial view? Well, can we see like Google Maps or whatever? So they keep all their construction equipment, all their materials thing?
Yep.
Is screening needed to freshen that up? Is all that visible from the road?
No, it's all very, it's all way in the back here. There's all their materials and everything all in the back. And you see, there's a lot of vegetation around the site. This is Taft Road here. This is the new proposed, I think Dollar General that just went in right here. So they come back here into this existing service yard. I think they have a soil pile here and a couple of materials here, but everything's way in the back, so you don't see anything.
Okay, and there's no houses around that would have that, well?
Correct. There are these apartments over here, but there's no, I don't think there are any residential houses
Okay.
around this area now.
Is there any signs?
I think they have a sign on their building on the face.
So there's nothing?
Well, I'll jump in because I was gonna.
Oh, we are proposing. I don't think there was anything on the building. Yeah, we are proposing the monuments sign out front still. I apologize. I forgot we still wanted to do that. It's right up here.
I didn't see you have proposed monuments.
Yes.
I didn't see anything on the building, so.
Well, maybe I'm wrong. I thought he had a little sign on the building.
Mark, can you go back to the area, please?
Yeah.
I want to go along with Mary's thoughts. You know, we have the new Dollar General, and this is all wide open here. I was looking for maybe some landscaping along in here. Mark, and I know you had mentioned the possibility of needing some additional landscaping. Was there anything?
Well, I just suggested the board consider it since the materials and stuff that's being back there, it's kind of haphazardly placed. And so it's not very neat looking. It is a contractor laydown yard, which again are not, you know, particularly aesthetically pleasing. So I just suggested that. So maybe, I mean, if the board members would want to go out to the site, look at it and take a look, I, yeah, it's tough to tell, you know, with the Dollar General being new, this site being there, we've been out there to meet relative to the Dollar General project quite a bit. And I really don't recall being able to see anything from the apartment buildings, at least the ones that are up towards the front on the site, because there is quite a bit of vegetation there. But again, I, maybe the board wants to go out and, you know, view the site and come to a determination if something additional is needed. I guess is what I would recommend, yeah.
Anything else? Jack?
So by basically proposing this building and then withdrawing, they kind of called attention that they were operating without a site plan for ten plus years?
I guess, pretty much.
Okay. All right.
Happens.
I'm all set.
So, Tim, the traffic dump trucks and that kind of thing, the number of vehicles that are going to be going in and out, is that changing at all?
No, nothing's changing with their existing operation, no. There are ten wheeled dump trucks, one semi truck. Those are the major operating vehicles for their construction.
Mark, you know, we have some other construction sites like this in town, and they end up drawing dirt and stone onto the road. That was my only concern. Northern Boulevard is a site that we have that. I thought we even, did we put like a wheel wash kind of thing on that one? No? This is a longer paved area and it's been operating, but I just wonder, we don't want that on Taft Road.
Yeah, I guess I think they're improving the situation by paving the
Making it longer.
making an apron and on there.
Increasing traffic.
And I don't know, Steve, are you aware of any complaints or issues? Okay. So I guess, again, since they've been operating, if there hasn't been any notable complaints, I guess it probably should be okay.
That was my thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Mike?
Steve? All set, thank you.
Yeah? Mark, anything additional?
Well, yeah, so I think there were a few other minor notes and things that needed to be added to the plan in addition to the grading, lighting, utilities. Did you? Okay, I don't, I didn't see him on the particular one that I had there, but regardless. So I guess probably in between now and the next meeting, we should somehow communicate as to whether any additional landscaping is needed.
I'll take a ride out there this weekend, you know.
Yeah.
You can send Mark an email.
Yeah, yeah, if anyone else goes out, just email me and please copy Steve on it. And we'll communicate with the applicant to make sure
keep the progress.
they know what the board wants.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is site plan review continuation for Monterey Development Route thirty-one proposed apartment complex, Americana of Cicero.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
I've been going on it for a couple of years now.
No worries, I got it. Thank you.
I'll take a little one.
All right, so, like I said, this project has been going on for a good couple of years now. I apologize for the, the large amount of submitted documents that we brought back to the town. Basically, because it's been so long since we've been in here, we wanted to submit everything again, make sure everybody had everything, because there are new board members on the board since we've been in here last. So what we're trying to do specifically at this juncture is actually going for a zone change to a PUD. So we're technically in the PUD zone change process. Part of that process is submitting the site plan application, and then hopefully eventually getting this board to recommend to the town the approval of the PUD. Then we would, I believe, come back here for a site plan approval, official site plan approval. What we're doing and what we've been proposing, nothing's really changed as far as the actual proposal and what we're doing out here. We have two sets of apartments. There's roughly ninety-six apartments. Double check numbers. Yes, ninety-six total apartments between these two buildings and these two buildings, and roughly twenty-four townhouse units here in the back. Route thirty-one is here. American Legion is here. We have one access point through here. One, one part of documentation was our approvals from New York State DOT for the proposed driveway. We were approved for a hundred and twenty units. That's what we're proposing, is a hundred and twenty units on this lot between the apartments and the townhouses. So it's a total of a hundred and twenty units. Per the town code with the area, you're actually allowed a hundred and forty, but per New York State DOT with the approvals that we got from New York State DOT, we can only have the hundred and twenty. We do not, the one, one big change is that we did not get the full approval for the access over here on the, to the emergency access to the American Legion that we previously showed. So we took that off. So that triggered us having to sprinkler the townhouses in the back. We do have approval in the latter from the fire department that should have been in the documentation that they're okay with the plan and design. A lot of, a lot of the other changes that have been taking place between the last time we were here and now is engineering and design stuff for the engineering. So I don't want to get into all that. And Mark has comments. He, he's been great to work with. Mark and our engineer have been working great together. We do have a wetland permit in place for the crossing of the wetlands. So you have wetlands through here. There are existing sewer on site, and we are dropping a manhole in here. So for future access to it through for the out and front parcels. That's the gist of everything. I don't want to go into a huge spiel, but if anybody has any questions, concerns, comments, I'd love to hear it.
Jim?
Okay, so you cannot go through the Legion for emergency access, right?
And was that done at one point? My notes said it was done.
We thought it was, we had approval agreement with them in place, and for whatever reasons, they decided not to put it in writing and officially give it to us.
Is that why you're changing? You said it was one thing, and then you're changing it to a PU?
Nope. So we are going, technically, we're going for a zone change right now from general commercial to PUV. That's been the process all along, as far as what we've been trying to do this the last three years. So.
Why was that necessary? Why?
Because we're doing a mixed use as far as having residential apartments in the front and townhouse units in the back, specifically the zoning for like our apartment or general commercial doesn't allow for that mixture of uses on the same parcel. So that's why we have to go for the community.
Okay, so where you do have access, will there be a light there?
Wasn't a light out front, no. Nope, it's just a right in, right out, or not right in, a fully ingress, ingress from here again, that the DOT didn't have any mitigations or anything for the hundred and twenty units. We have a full traffic study that was also looked at by both DOT. So we should be good to go as far as needing anything at the intersection.
Okay. That's all I got for now.
That is probably one of the biggest stumbling blocks was the entrance and he dressed on thirty-one.
Yes, so we got that, we technically got that approved like seven years ago, six, seven years ago.
You know, there's some kind
gone back and forth with DOT a lot. That was what we first tried to get initially. We wanted that in place before we even brought the site plan to the town.
So putting in, in a light, not on the table then? There's, you know, a left end off thirty-one when you're at the east, that's where they're going to put it, a turn lane? Was there something about that?
There's, I think there's already a turn lane in place out there. Then that's one of the reasons why we're allowed to have the full grid, am I wrong?
I don't believe so.
I'll take a look at the traffic study as far as
Okay.
yeah, reasoning.
Yeah, it's so one of the initial reviews the DOT had suggested a turn lane, but in their further reviews, they did not require it. So they, they've granted them the, just the full access to the site without any sort of yeah, it's just two lanes. But yeah, no, no problem. So, but, but the DOT has approved it without any mitigation. Given, as Tim mentioned, you know, it's been quite some time since the original study was done. Once we found out Micron was coming in, we asked them to go back to the DOT and confirm that there wasn't any need for them to relook at it or provide some mitigation. And the DOT came back and said that it's still conceptually approved as it is.
I know we've had we picked up today, actually, a report after report after report, you know, different subjects.
Yeah, that's my fault. But I, I asked them because some of the board members here are relatively new, may not be familiar with the project. It's been going on for quite some time. And I just wanted to get And I just wanted to get everything. I asked them to provide all that, so the board understood the amount of work and the amount of time that's been put into this. And it's just not something that's popping up and, you know, it, it's new. It, it's been ongoing for quite a while, but again, there's some new board members. And I just wanted to make sure, we had everything, so you could see, you know, architectural elevations, wetland studies have been completed, traffic studies, it, uh, cultural resources, archaeological studies, et cetera. So, there's been a lot of work put into this and I, I just asked them to do that, so the board.
It was good.
Got it all in one place and.
Took some time, but it was good to go through it again.
You know that it's, you know that it's all there.
Well, we appreciate that, because, uh, you know, there's always questions and we try to figure out the answers ourselves to start with. Yeah, the, the, the traffic part was, uh, stumbling blocks, but if we can work it out like apparently you have, uh, all the better.
I'm sorry.
Just gonna say when, uh, Micron gets going, they have to change this name to Micron Apartments?
We'll ask the owners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Eric?
So, I, being, uh, one of the new board members, appreciate that all the, well, not the size of it, but, um, I didn't have any information on this from before. So, and my questions that I had were addressed, like I noticed the traffic study was from a while ago, so I'm glad that you got them to come back out and you know, reconfirm that everything was okay. Can we just see the aerial view again? Can you just stand out? Yeah, so there's no other roads or way to have an emergency access?
We, we exhaust, like, truly before we even brought it to the town, we exhausted all other options to, to get a secondary ingress point. And that's again, one, one of the big reasons why we got that letter from the fire department and they're, being, them being okay with what we're doing.
That is my only concern, really. I mean, there could be an accident right at the entrance. So.
Per the fire department and our engineers here who specifically talked to the fire department, but because the, the widths of the lanes are so much wider now, they, they didn't have any concerns about getting around a potential accident if there was something going on. That was one of the reasons, but it's, the other thing is, is that they're all sprinkled now and that's, that's another reason.
Alright, I'm good, Jen.
I'm all set for tonight.
So going back to the emergency entrance. Steve, is it a requirement when you have a road length over a certain amount? It's subdivision.
Yep.
So if this wasn't P U D?
Well, if you were subdividing and you were doing, you may, you may have that, you may, that, that may have triggered it. Single family, yeah, single family, like a lot.
Yeah, I, I did read the, uh, the letter from the fire department and they claim they're very happy with it, especially with the sprinkler system. Mark, did you have thoughts on it?
No, I, it really isn't from the fire department, so they signed off on our champion, obviously.
Okay.
The, the fire code requires it as well unless, the exception is, is if you sprinkle all buildings, including non-residential buildings, then you, you don't have to provide that secondary access.
So garages.
Pardon me?
So garages.
Yes, right.
You didn't, did you?
We don't have the garages specifically sprinkled in this, in this, now, I was explaining that because we have firewalls every four units that we don't, that it meets the fire code, and therefore we don't have to sprinkle it. Um, that was for our, our tech.
Well, we can, we can, we can talk about, obviously that's gonna come into, we come to permitting, but my last reading of that section, it's includes non-residential buildings as well, regardless of the fire area.
And you'll deal with that through your office?
Yep.
In the letter from the fire department, they talked about the fact that you, uh, moved a couple of hydrants and added one. And that's all been done. I, I couldn't find them on the plan.
Yes, that's been, uh, changed and maybe Ed can find them out real quick for me?
We'll have to take a look at that.
I think they're.
They meet the distance requirements.
I'm, yeah, it's on the detailed utility plans.
I looked and looked.
Take me a second to find it too.
Alright, and you're gonna verify that?
Yeah, before we meet again, we'll have to make sure they meet all the distance requirements from other buildings as well.
I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with that. And the, um, there was some discussion about the sidewalk from Thirty-One going in, that it wasn't five foot from the road and the, the situation is on that side of the road, there's an easement. So you couldn't push the sidewalk out five foot away from the road?
On, on the, on the main road going in?
Yeah.
Yes, I think we have that proposed.
There, there's not a separation between it, it's something we had requested, but due to the grading through there.
Some kind of easement that runs.
Uh, I don't think it was an easement issue, I just think that because of the, the grading that's in there.
There's a grading plan that shows it.
Yeah. That the, that there wasn't enough space to fit the road in there and offset the sidewalk also.
It looked to me like it might be able to be done on the other side of the road.
We can, we can look at that. You're talking about this sidewalk here?
Yes.
Potentially moving it to this.
Yeah, the issue is it's right up against the road and we asked that it be five foot away from the road, like the other sidewalks, which is typical. And you couldn't because of the swell or the easement. Look at that.
Yeah, we can work, we can work with that.
And then it, you know, one of the comments today was public comment was the accessibility with biking, walking. It doesn't cross the wetlands. And we got a road that crosses the wetlands, but not a sidewalk.
No, we couldn't, um, as part of the permitting process as far as the overall disturbance, I believe, I'll just double check.
So let's put a road in for cars, but not sidewalk for
Yeah.
pedestrian traffic.
Because we had to reduce the amount of disturbance of this crossing to under the tenth acre and get our nation permit. We couldn't propose additional disturbance through the wetlands.
Can that be requested? I don't know how the process works.
I think we tried originally to. Trying to get that, it's just, again, trying to keep it under that one acre disturbance level is impossible. Pretty much impossible to get a sidewalk in there as well. We're pretty much at the limit as it is.
You comfortable with that? I, I would really like to see a sidewalk go along the entire way. They'd rather have pedestrians come out onto the road.
Yeah, so, I mean, adding the sidewalk will increase the amount of, you know, wetland disturbance and impact.
Microns could do it.
So, and, and they've got the permit in hand. Um, I mean, they've already gone through the permitting process with, with the core to get the permit, which is a lengthy process. Uh, if they were to add additional, uh, disturbance in there, it might it might do one of, well, one, it would reopen the, the process with the core, which again would take time and it might put them above a threshold through which they would have to do mitigation. Whereas they don't have to do mitigation now. What they are underneath now is what's called a nationwide permit. Um, and, and I, off the top of my head, I don't know those thresholds, but I can look at them a little bit closer with the, with the applicant a- and come back and determine what the impact would be. But, but it is difficult, I, I, this is not ideal by any means for the, for the access and for the, you know, the, um, you know, having to be pedestrian friendly as possible, but I also understand and know that it's very, very difficult with the, with the core. Um, and if that throws them into a different, different threshold, then that that would be very, very difficult. So, I can look into that a little bit further for you.
Bridge?
Pedestrian bridge.
If you could look at the options. And then can you go to the full plan again? Please. And at one point, we talked about trees along here and they're actually, were on one of the plans. There was a residential back here. But now I don't see them anywhere.
I think that we took them off because of the existing, um, vegetation that's around the site.
I couldn't, Mark, can you go to the aerial?
Yeah, because if you go to the aerial, it shows.
Yeah, it was hard for me to.
So if you go to sheet C A one thirty-two.
Yeah, I'm talking about along here. They were there at one point. Look up, look up at the screen, please. Right here.
I don't know if we ever proposed, proposed trees in this area, because this is the swelling area, because there are existing, like I said, there's an existing vegetation that's gonna be left there. I think it's like in here. Oh. Oh, that's our conceptual. I was thinking about the sidewalk. We can revisit it, that's fine.
So if you go to the aerial, maybe they're not needed. I just, you know, I knew they were there at one point. I was trying to establish, so we have a house here and it looks like it comes to about here, but I'm not positive, so if you can.
I can plot that house and plot where that relationship is of the house and our property line and how.
Yes, maybe they won't be needed.
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
And that's it for me. Mike?
I'm good.
Steve? Good for now, thank you.
Yeah. Mark?
Yeah, so, um, I guess just want to talk a little bit about the process again, since, um, the, uh, again, some of the newer board members and even, we don't do P U Ds very often. Uh, and the general process is they go to the town board, get the general, uh, approval from the town board to proceed with the P U D. It then comes to the planning board for a detailed review of the site plan, which is a process we're going through now. The planning board will then make a recommendation to the town board to either accept the plan as presented or, or propose modifications to the plan. Um, if, if the applicant's not necessarily willing to comply with everything that the planning board wants. Uh, after that recommendation is made, it goes back to the town board, public hearing is held. And then the zone change is approved, because zone changes are approved by the town board. And that's what this process really is, is, is a zone change. Um, so tentatively, uh, I think we can, I can finish up my review in, you know, within, prior to the next meeting. Um, you know, the planning board should take a look at the plans, architectural elevations, everything has been provided and, and we should should possibly be in a position at the next meeting to make that recommendation to the town board. Uh, if it's not at the next meeting, I would think certainly by the next. So, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process, where we are in that process. And, and what the planning board's role in it is.
Any questions? We good on that? We're all set?
Alright, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is site plan review for Stella Roofing. This is probably at Six Three Four One Island Road.
Okay. Good evening to employee ironies and enrollments. This, uh, we were here in front of you. I personally wasn't able to make the meeting, but one of my, uh, representatives was here, Pat. Um, at the last meeting, I believe. This is the existing property located on Island Road. They are proposing to have a roofing contractor come into this building. We, if you, if you didn't go through it, and last year we got a site plan approval for this, um, for this site, he constructed the building. He was gonna go in there as, with his landscape company, doesn't want to do that anymore. Now he's got a roofing contractor coming in that he's hoping to, to occupy the building with. Um, so that's why we're here for the site plan for this new occupant. Again, the building's already in place. Um, couple of the changes, we did find out, and you guys should have gotten the, the letter of all the changes that we did. Specifically, we uh, we revised, the biggest change is we revised the, the parking area in the back. We did find out that this gra- existing gravel area is not suitable for parking on. At this time, it was just basically millings that got pushed around. So, this area right here, we are gonna try to utilize for, we are gonna utilize for parking and they're gonna have to take it out and replace it and put in, uh, an actual gravel pad that meets, uh, our standards detail for the parking in that area. The proposed, um, the existing gravel that's in this area is gonna be pulled out and grassed and seeded. Um, we did reduce the amount of parking on the site. We did talk to the roofing contractor and we, we basically had too many parking spaces for them that they didn't need. Um, the one big reason was is we thought that the employees would come to the site, park and then take a company vehicle and leave. That is not the case. The employees are given a, a vehicle, a company vehicle, so they're not going to be coming to the site parking their personal vehicles. They're gonna already have contracted, uh, office vehicles that they're gonna use, so that we were able to reduce the number of parking because of that. Um, so we loaded, we put that in there. We were also, uh, one of the concerns was the waste from job sites. There will be no waste from job sites coming to this site. Everything's cleaned up at the whatever site they're working on that day. Nothing comes back to the site. The only waste that will be in these dumpsters in the back are basically what's, um, from the building, the office, um, materials and typical waste from everyday use. And we changed that, we, we are proposing that they're gonna change out those, uh, light fixtures and we, we added a new, uh, lighting plan.
How about the restrictive covenants?
Oh, I'm sorry, restrictive covenant. Um, we were, um, the, our attorney was in front of the town board last week for the restrictive covenants. We are going to be modifying the restrictive covenant. There is, um, going to be a public hearing, I believe, next week for the restrictive covenant being modified. Um, so we are in that process. We gotta get this done first and then once this is done, they can, uh, potentially approve the restrictive covenant modified.
Steve, did you say the town board is gonna be looking for a recommendation?
Well, I mean, the last, I would think so. I mean, at the zone change, the planning board made a recommendation as to what they thought the appropriate uses would be there. They took into consideration while accepting the covenant. Initially, they changed that and they're holding a public hearing again to do that.
Yeah, have we seen the modification request? I don't think I have.
The, the letter we received was, they're asking for the covenant to be removed or lifted out, right?
Yeah, what I saw is the.
I did talk to, uh, attorney, he's, that sense talk to Robert, and it is being modified, not removed.
I, I think what you, you were looking for from the town perspective, the town board perspective is a recommendation from the planning board as to what you would want in that covenant. And I think you're along the lines of, you want them to not remove the covenant, but to if you're gonna modify it, modify it such that they can only do what's approved in that, for the use that's approved in that site plan when we get it. Okay, so in other words, you can't, still have a covenant in place, but the covenant restricts them to everything but you know, so you, you exclude all the industrial uses, except the use that they're, that they're having, uh, that they proposed. In addition to, in addition to that, we also want the covenant, if you did this, the reason we did have a covenant and ask that in the covenant be that it can't be changed without the town making approval, is to prevent
Because of the allowable uses in that district.
Right.
So, I assume the initial covenant allowed landscaping. And now this one would allow roofing. Has that been put together yet? How do we make a recommendation to the town board tonight? Okay. Mr. McNermet.
Michael McNermet, representing. I appeared before the town board last week. They did set a public hearing for next week, so it'll be May 14. Initially, we were requesting that the restrictive covenant be removed, but after talking with the town attorneys. It's clear that there was a reason for a restrictive covenant. We're only looking for a modification. The original modification or the original covenant allowed the property to be used for landscaping business. This application is not much different. It's certainly far different from all the possibilities under an industrial use. And we're comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you.
Planning boards thinking on this. And then you can listen to him and make a lot of right.
All right. Not yet. Tim, are you set with your presentation? So we'll open it to questions at this point.
Any sign?
There is a proposed sign, I believe, on the. Paul proposed wall mounted sign on the face of the building and there's the proposed freestanding sign out front. Sign, it kind of shows up on this. View here, here, and here's the freestanding sign that's going to be located right.
Okay.
Are those the real colors?
Those are the colors of the.
You just change the detail on that because it says wall mounted side detail.
Oh, you're right.
So basically you're going to beef up the back stone yard or accommodate the heavy trucks?
They're not really heavy trucks, but the, what was out there wouldn't have worked for parking purposes anyway. So we have to, we're proposing the typical twelve inch gravel, yes.
Because I'm thinking, you know, with roofing, there'd be trucks with boom sound.
They have a. There was large boom truck sheen stored back there, but.
You know, if they'd be too big then to put inside even?
I don't think they'd be too big to fit inside, but it's also a pretty heavy twelve inches of gravel.
And I'm just curious, on the building, are there overhead doors and?
Yep, there's. No, I can't think of north, south, east, west. On the east side of the thing, there's. Overhead doors.
That's a, let's say it's a really nice construction there.
Yeah, I think it did a great.
One of the better ones in town, actually.
It's a good looking building.
I could see more of that, actually, whoever designed that one. Okay, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Mary?
Is there going to be a showroom or anything in the building for customers to come look at samples of product?
I don't believe so, not that I'm aware of, no.
And will there be a lot of deliveries and bringing new materials?
A lot of the deliveries, from my understanding, get taken right to the sites.
Oh, I'm good.
Thank you.
I'm good. All set, thank you.
I just have a technical question. Maybe it's fine, but I'll leave it to you folks. The plan says no new lighting proposed.
No new, I'm sorry, what?
No new lighting proposed.
Oh.
On the plan on.
Revising.
Page two.
I can take that known. I missed that speed. I apologize.
No worries. That was the only additional thing I had, Mike.
You, real quick, on that extra parking, you, you're going to grass that, you said? Yes, and how many cars are helping with? So right now. We have twelve spaces back here. Twelve spaces back here that are going to get created and then this whole area that is gravelish is going to get pulled and seeded and grassed.
Okay, okay. All set?
I'm all set, thank you.
We'll come back to you, Neil. Mark? Do you want to prepare the motion for the recommendation?
Town board, in the direction of a proposed application, so we can. Planning board would not recommend the complete removal of existing covenants regarding this property. These covenants are designed to protect against a period of industrial use that would be allowable under an industrial joint designation, but are incompatible and inappropriate for this property. And we clear the planning board holds that mostly allowable uses in an industrial zone would not be appropriate for this property. Second, to the town board, the site should alter, amend and or replace the existing covenants. The new or amended covenants should limit the uses of proposed property to the uses limited to the, to those as set forth in the site plan that's approved by the planning board. The current approved use and all other allowable uses in industrial zones should be excluded. Third, the covenant or the current restrictive covenant is contained in the declaration, which has been recorded in the Island County Clerk's office. The new covenant and or amendment to the existing covenant should run over the land and clearly state that it can only be amended with the consent of the town board. Fourth, the proposed amendment to the current covenant as contained in the recording declaration should be presented for the town attorney to reveal and approve it before approved, before approved by the town board.
I'll make that a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell? Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So do we want to move forward with approval of the site plan or do we want to wait for? All right. Right, I didn't know if it would be conditioned. That's fine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is for site plan review. This is a proposed hazard waste transfer facility at seven two zero one Shiler Road.
I did just have a conversation with Clean Earth and they would like to pull this from tonight's application and we will resubmit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mary, you're welcome.
Yeah. I knew you'd like that.
Next agenda item is site plan continuation for a proposed hardware store at eight three seven nine Thompson Road.
Hey, everyone. My name is Neil Sinsmeyer, Napparella Consulting. We have the site engineers back again. I want to make sure you have the most current plan. We made a late submittal Thursday night. It looks like you do on the screen. Should have. F scales. Does anybody need one? What I'd quickly like to do is just update the board with what we revised, which is everything in the green bubble. Mark sent out a comment the middle of last week and we made some quick changes for those comments. First one was related to the distance between the stock and the door. We labeled it ten foot separation. And the other one was the landscaping. We had added some landscaping trees on the south side of the site. Where we moved the pallets up on the grass area. See, that's what we changed last time. We moved some additional stock that was against the building. We flopped it to the other side of the drive through up on the curb. Added a couple landscaping trees and then put a clear distance from the front of the building. On the drive through side and my pointer broke, so I can't point to it, but Mark zoom in. Believe the board recommended a twenty foot separation of stock from the southeast corner of the building. Clear, again, to help keep the stock away from the sightlines mainly along Thompson Road there. So those were the changes and as well, I worked with Neil on some lingo note number two. We changed. In purple color about the cleanliness of the building, excuse me. The board had some concerns about cleaning it up and power washing and trim work and stuff, so I worked with Neil on that language. That should be the majority of the changes the board had asked.
Thank you. We'll open it to questions, Jim?
Okay, so what is the resolution then for cleaning up the building?
Yeah, it's note number two in the purple there. I can read it like.
Why don't you go ahead and read it?
Certainly. Note, all right, so originally, I'll read the whole note. Some of it was from a previous submittal as well. No exterior building changes are proposed at this time, with the exception of signage. The entire building's exterior shall be pressure washed to remove any stains and or discoloring. So as to present a uniform and clean exterior. Maintenance, repair and or replacement of trim and all other outdoor elements of the building shall be performed to enhance the appearance of the building. The compliance. Oh, no, here you go. The codes office shall inspect the exterior of the building to ensure compliance herein before issuing a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so that's the number two.
Correct, note number two. All right, I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing all of last meeting's. Issues, but that's great. And assuming everything continues smoothly, is there a date for possible opening? Tomorrow?
Again, he had a fire inspection recently.
He did, yeah, he's in good shape. As far as that goes.
So.
Soon as we can get a TCO or CLO.
Well, look forward to your guys' opening.
He's very anxious as well, thank you.
For sure. How about this? Any progress on getting rid of that sign out front?
It's, again, we reached out to DOT after the last meeting. They said they were going to remove it that week. And it's still there, obviously. I drove by it on my way here.
They attempted, I understand the contractor, but the equipment they had there. Was not able, they'd have to cut it up or break it up. They can't even drag it across the street over to the lay down, their temporary lay down yard, so they're working on it.
It is on the state's property still, unfortunately, it's just out of our hands. I forwarded along that email that we had from the previous owners.
It's not really in the way of the roundabout.
It's got to go.
It's in the way.
Yeah, it's in the way. It's on our property, state's property, yeah.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mary?
I just want to thank you as well for taking care of our concerns and I don't have any.
These pallets that you flop down to the south, are they just going to be placed up on the curb and the grass? Are you going to put down something before setting them?
We had planned just to put them on the grass. To put a gravel pad. If it becomes a mess, I'm sure you would do the same. But right now they're just on the grass.
Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
I would think a gravel pad is minimum. Right?
And, well, again, they're not meant to be there all the time.
Yeah, and it's not going to be grass after they sit there for.
It seems to me, just from what I understand, the back stocking, whatever you call this, is not a year round situation. I think he buys a truck, you know, a truckload or a. Trail car or rail car load, certain times it's stuck up and then it sells. I saw it, I was over there today. It's on the grass. If it becomes an issue, we'll have to address with them and get, get, get. Some stone underneath that.
We don't mind if we could put that. If it becomes an issue, we could put down gravel, stone.
The ones that were originally going to be around the building, right? Well, they're still around the building. They're just not double stacked.
He had.
Initially, there were none there.
Last time, so we just moved to a double stack.
Some of them.
So that's overstock and not seasonal?
It's kind of the same thing. Overstock is just how I phrased. The terminology. That stuff's more of a storage area where the stuff at the front is, you know, anybody can run in and grab. That stuff an employee would have to get. But it is like topsoil and stuff like that. That they keep outside the building. But it is readily available. If you order something, somebody would come out and take something physically from that area and bring it out to your car for you.
I have nothing additional, Mike?
All right.
Steve?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mark?
All set?
I'll make a motion for our standard seeker. Do you have a second?
A second.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell? Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the seeker. Neil, would you propose a motion for approval, please?
Good for him.
You're going to move to get the option of a resolution approving the application on the Cicero Ace Inc. large quarter. Eighty three seventy nine Thompson Road, report tire start. Condition on the following one, the Polish game running center elevation is presented by the applicant. The planning board in the direction of this application is to be incorporated by reference to the site plan and the board's approval thereof. According to the actual project, when substantially the art of the adding is presented herein. Two. The overstock pallets as depicted on the south side of the building will be placed on gravel pads if necessary, in the opinion group calls on.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the motion.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Onto the last agenda item. This is a sketch plan review for a proposed administration building at the cottages at Garden Grove and Maltor Court.
Dave Schlosser, Schaffer Architects, representing the cottages at Garden Grove. This is an interesting site. It's an interesting project in the perspective of. For those of you who have been on the board for a few years, we actually presented it in twenty twenty one. It was approved. We carried it on to a building permit. We even sent the building permit. Had several renewals, finally let it lapse. And then, of course, three months ago, the owner came back and said, now we have the finances to do the project, so we're, we're back presenting it as a new project. So what is the project? Basically, it's an administrative office building slab on grade wood frame. Essentially, in the character of the existing cottages that are on the site. It's an eighteen plus acre PUD. It was the, this particular site was allocated in the original, in the original PUD. For the administrative office building. This and one, one of the cottages was not constructed. So there's twelve cottages on the site, which is basically nursing home, skilled nursing home. The administrative function is actually, they went just north of the site into the arena. Basically, they've been leasing. Space there for ten plus years and now they're going to, they want to move out of that and onto the site and build this particular building. The site itself, we've submitted, we've submitted a copy of the original, original site survey. As well as a survey of the work area, if you will. The, again, the original site. Survey and plan had a very detailed fifty some page drainage report. It included this particular site, that particular building approximately that size and a thirteenth cottage, which was not constructed. So our civil engineer, who was the original civil engineer for the project for the site. Has certified that from a drainage perspective, the original drainage stormwater management actually exceeds what, what we're proposing here. So we are, there's a drainage area, relatively large drainage area just to the southeast of this project, which is to the lower right hand corner. And we do, we don't have to make any modifications to stormwater because we actually exceed. The original proposal exceeds what we are proposing here. And that's been certified and given to you um in documentation form. The project basically includes an eighteen parking spaces, um there's an existing sidewalk that circles um uh Meltzer Court. And that remains, the there's uh parallel parking on the street and that also remains, so the only thing that's being modified is uh within this particular parcel is the building itself. The eighteen parking spaces of which one is handicap, um a loading area, because the back half of the building is a uh distribution kitchen. What they do is basically they um prepare foods offsite, bring them to the distribution kitchen, package them back up, and then they basically are trucked to each of the cottages. And uh the rest of the building, the front uh two thirds of the building are their administrative offices. We've given you um photometrics, we've given you um a lot of the material that was originally proposed and submitted previously, so we've we've got um again, site plans, building elevations, photometrics. Um grading plans, et cetera, and I guess I'd open it up for questions.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I'm good for right now.
Doc?
Um landscaping, is there anything been?
There's a full landscaping plan proposed, uh fairly detailed uh foundation plantings. And uh the uh if you if you want, basically, the landscape plan is C three zero one zero. And three quarters of this site is uh will be grassed, it's it's pretty rugged at the moment. Um we can't go into the retention area, which is again the lower right hand corner. But you can see the foundation planting and then there's uh several trees that exist that will remain and several others that are being added. Um all deciduous trees.
And is what I'm looking at here is this uh the elevation of the?
That's an image of the building, it's, yes, it is, that's fairly typical of what the cottages looks like, so the coloration, the the style, the residential colonial style, if you will. Is in character with the um the nursing home cottages.
Nice addition to your uh facility there.
Thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Mary?
So they bring, they prepare food offsite and bring it here to be.
Yes. Yeah, there there's um strict regulations by the health department as to how they can move food. So basically, they um they prepare um the kitchen itself, which is shown on our drawings, is not a massive commercial kitchen. So the food is prepared because it's it's really Loretto owns it and basically they have commissaries and they prepare the bulk food. And bulk food is brought into the distribution kitchen and then subdivided into each of the um the the areas that go to each of the houses cottages. And then it's delivered uh again uh either um flash frozen or um or cooled or whatever.
And so there's no like traffic pattern around the building, just back in and?
Correct, in and out, very easy, very simple.
Got it.
Um the plan actually is exactly the same as uh was submitted in twenty one with the exception of like one little sidewalk that's been added. Um down in the lower left hand corner, other than that, um it's the same plan.
Doc?
Uh thank you, you're really sharp, all set?
Um one technical question, if you look at the environmental form, question number nine talks about. Uh does the proposed action meet or exceed state energy code requirements? And the answer is action will meet state emergency code. So it's probably an autocorrect kind of thing.
I'll correct that.
Would this require architectural review? Doctor Steve?
Well, I mean, technical sense, yes, yeah.
So I'm not sure it would meet.
I mentioned that to.
Did you?
The day, I I think, I don't know if you looked up the architectural guideline yet or, I know, I we talked about it a little bit about that, I told them that's one change, that's the last time we were here. Although there was a structural element to the PUD and those, you know, I think the buildings would. Apply with uh with that.
So, yes.
Well, the PUD, I mean, I think the PUD gives you some discretion, yeah.
PUD overrides it, all right. All right, I I'm happy with that, I mean, look, it fits in well with them, but it probably wouldn't meet the new. Architectural, I'm guessing. Your thoughts?
Oh, I think it would.
Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah.
I was just wondering about the crown molding and something on a lower level.
Yeah.
But but I agree, it is nice.
It's a human.
If the PUD overrides it, then I'm good with that.
Mike? If it was approved three years ago, what would prevent it from not, I mean, is anything changed that is going to be needed?
It lapses time, it the approval is no longer valid.
Okay. But you're basically just going to go through the same process and there's nothing that's changed that would.
Just the sidewalk.
Okay. That's all right.
I'm good for now, thank you.
Yeah. Mark?
Yeah, all set, uh.
It's a great facility.
Take it trouble, we copied it. Just in case, in case you wanted to add anything.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda items, is there any discussion from any of the team members? We have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned, good night, everybody.